Okay, good morning or good afternoon, everyone. I'm Michael Dever, Director of Public Works for Cuyahoga County, and welcome to today's Cuyahoga County Planning Commission meeting. And then, if we could call the roll, please.
Mayor Burke?
Here.
Laura Black?
Here.
Mayor Dana Jones?
Here.
Director Dever?
Here.
Mayor Gallo? Marco Fields?
Here.
Mayor Kurtz?
Here.
Mayor Orkut? Joseph Nani?
Here.
Mayor Weiss?
Present.
Mayor Wheeler? You have a quorum.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you. Next item on the agenda are comments from the public. And that, does anybody signed in to speak today?
Yes. Do you want to go in order of the...
I think that's best.
Morgan France?
Actually, if you don't mind, we're kind of, we, there's a contingency of us here, and if you don't mind, I think we'll do it associated with myself first and Morgan next, and then Ruston Corey. We're all on the list.
Can you tell me your name?
My name is George Pappan. By the way, I know that we only have three minutes here, so I'll try to be brief.
Okay, yeah, no, I haven't started yet. I just want to make sure I knew who was speaking.
Yeah, my name is George Pappandreas. I'm with Carnegie Management and Development Corporation. We are the applicant in connection with the Olmsted Town Center project, which is item number six on your agenda. We are a full-service real estate development company that has headquarters in Westlake, Ohio. We've been in business for over 35 years. We have over 7 million square feet of space in our portfolio, which consists of office, retail, institutional, government, leisure. And in addition to that, we have, as part of our objective and part of our mission, always is to obtain or to seek projects that we develop and keep them in our portfolio for the useful life of the project. And I think that's important to note here because that's what we're going to do here with the Olmsted Town Center project. We stick with these projects. That allows us to get accountability, and most importantly, a relationship with the jurisdictions and the cities and the townships that we do business with. And that's one thing that I want to emphasize here. So, we've been working on the Olmsted Town Center project for almost two years now. And in so doing, we've met with all the stakeholders. And I think that's important, too, because we've met with the residents, we've met with the businesses, we've met with the Board of Zoning Appeals, we've met with the zoning commission, we've met with the Board of Trustees. And all of them have unanimously supported, wholeheartedly, this project. And we've gotten complete unanimous approval for it. And so, we are here tonight to try and seek your approval in keeping with that site plan and that project that everybody has seen. And I think it's important to note that we've been navigating this path very long, for a very long time, and it's been very, very difficult, obviously, trying to balance the market realities, the fiscal viability of the project, trying to work with the desires of the community, and yet comply with the zoning codes of the township and the county, which unfortunately aren't necessarily consistent. And that has posed some challenges to us. But in reliance on what we felt was unanimous approval, we now have fully executed leases with national credit tenants on long-term leases that are ready to move forward, bring stability, economic vitality, that I know the township is relying upon. And it's based on the site plan that's before you here today. Naturally, because of the inconsistencies associated with the zoning codes between the various, the two jurisdictions, we've got some conflicts. And there are three concerns that are most problematic for us. And frankly, Morgan France, my colleague, is going to discuss what those are next in detail for you as part of his three-minute presentation. But what I want to leave you with here, because I'm not going to take too much more time, I need to implore you to approve this project in order to allow it to move forward. The conditions that have been placed in the staff report recognize or try to identify concerns that the county has raised, which we understand completely, and we want to work with that. But for them to be absolute in their application is detrimental and will not allow the project to move forward. I think we need, I need to underscore that. And so, I would implore this commission to evaluate those conditions and at the very least, rather than draw a line in the sand, allow us to work and address the concerns because there's so many other ways that we can approach and deal with them in a manner that doesn't necessarily eliminate the probability or the possibility of the project. And I think that's really important to note here. So, I want you to keep that in mind when Morgan sits and talks about each of these things. And we've discussed, even offered as a suggestion, that we enter into a development agreement that allows us to work together and address those issues in a manner that doesn't set that line in the sand that ultimately will, you know, kill the project effectively.
Thank you.
So, that's it. Thank you very much. I'd like to turn it over to Morgan.
Thank you.
Three minutes on the clock.
No, you were actually at 4:28.
I just want to note that that is an incredibly short amount of time. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Morgan France. I'm the preconstruction coordinator with Carnegie Management Development Corporation. Thank you all for your time today. And I really wanted to hit on those three items of concern that George mentioned in his, in his public comment. Principally, the wetlands to be considered a part of open space is crucially important for this development, as we have relied upon that in our designs and obtaining our approvals with the Olmsted Township Board of Trustees. And if the, if the subdivision regulations were to be followed specifically, we would have to eliminate the Phase II residential component of the development because there's 3.7 acre requirement for open space for this 18.5 acre development. And if we were to lose the Phase II residential, we would no longer have a project that's financially viable. We would no longer have a mixed-use development that would be in conflict with the township's Town Center Plan Development District zoning regulations. And the township will lose a critical tax income base associated with this development. And so, we're requesting that the commission consider that and consider the township's recommendation for approval of using the wetlands for the open space. The second item of concern is the Sterns Road curb cut, and we are requesting a minimum right-in, right-out, left-in traffic movement. And as the Highway Design Comment Number Four highlighted, our traffic impact analysis did not determine that there was any need to restrict access, especially considering all of the other properties at the intersection of Sterns and Bagley have full-access curb cuts, and our traffic consultant believes that this is the least problematic, and we agree with that, that analysis, that this is the least problematic traffic access in terms of stacking, queuing, left-turn movements, pedestrian crossing, et cetera. Additionally, the third item of concern is sidewalks for the development. We have a mixed-use development, which is anchored by commercial in the frontage and the residential in the rear. And we have been intentional in our design to specifically emphasize the separation of vehicular and pedestrian traffic and keeping pedestrians towards the residential where it's safer for residents to walk around and to funnel pedestrian traffic in the commercial zone so that we can minimize the crosswalks with heavier commercial traffic. And on page four, I brought a hand out with us. Page four shows pedestrian crossing network. And you can see that the access from Sterns Road, if the subdivision regulations were to be followed to a T, we would be required to introduce an additional seven crosswalks where the commercial components lie. And we believe that that is a, a life safety issue and it would pose a serious concern for safety for residents traversing the site. So, in conclusion, I specifically and Carnegie Management Development Corporation's requesting approval for the wetland to be considered and counted towards the open space requirement, that we obtain a minimum right-in, right-out, left-in traffic movement on Sterns Road, and that we receive an approved sidewalk design as it's been provided in our application. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks. And I am the third blue-suit member of the Carnegie team today. My name is Ruston Corey. I'm the president of Carnegie. And I just wanted to briefly underscore what, what George and Morgan said. You know, we haven't had the benefit of doing a major project in Cuyahoga County in a long time. We have completed more than $750 million in Class A commercial projects for institutions as well as for the Department of Veteran Affairs, primarily along the eastern seaboard. And we viewed this project as somewhat of a homecoming for ourselves, an opportunity to kind of reinvent ourselves in Cuyahoga County and do it in a community that we care deeply about. We first got engaged with Olmsted Township many, many years ago. And then, again, in 2019, when we pursued the Southwest General Medical Building that exists on the eastern boundary of the site today. And we really were sold on the vision of the trustees in Olmsted Township to bring this corner to life and to recreate a retail corridor that could be a town center, mixed-use development, to anchor their community. And we took a lot of time and were very thoughtful and engaged with experts in their field to ensure that they followed everything to a T, the Ohio Design Guides, highway design requirements, to ensure that we're creating something that is both safe and can be enjoyed by the residents and allow our tenants and businesses to prosper. This project is critical for a number of reasons. A major one is the vision of the Olmsted Township trustees and their community. They've been going through a very long stakeholder process of streetscape improvements. Those improvements rely upon having a commercial anchor to drive it and to, more importantly, fuel it. We didn't come into this project saying, "We need a TIF. We need all the extra money we can get." We came into it saying, "We want to create something that can be collaborative and the community can rally around." And we believe what's presented to you is an 18-month evolution of that idea on paper that we want to bring to life. The project in and of itself is projected to create more than 85, potentially 90, full-time equivalents, which represents more than $300,000 in potential income taxes, which we hope to be monetized through a joint economic development district with the city of North Olmsted, in addition to the potential real estate taxes, which we believe to be in excess of $300,000. Again, an economic engine to help the township achieve their goals. This project is critical, not just for us, but for the township and for its residents. And we've worked hand in glove for the better part of a year and a half to ensure that we're creating a product that will be enjoyable and will provide safety above all. So, when we talk about those conditions, I just want you all to know that we recognize there may be a desire to have sidewalks on both sides of the street, and we can appreciate that. But when you have conflict between vehicular movements and pedestrian movements, we want to minimize those to the maximum extent possible so that way there's clear sight visuals and there's no potential for conflict that a pedestrian crossing at multiple locations could create a vehicular backup. It's the same thing when we talk about the open space requirements. And we've had these conversations with the county already. We could impact those wetlands. We could destroy those wetlands and build ourselves a nice soccer field, and that would comply with the open space requirement. Nobody wants that. And so, all we're asking for is a little bit of reasonableness from this commission to understand the challenges that we've been faced, recognize how we've tried to solve them in a thoughtful manner that delivers a quality project, and ultimately, I know I'm wrapping up right now, and ultimately allow the township to realize their visions with this project. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else to sign in to speak?
No, not, not for public comment.
Okay.
All right. Oh, I didn't see you signed in for public comment.
Lee Beckman?
If you could, come forward and just state your name if it's...
Okay. My name is Lee Beckman. I'm with Beck Suppliers. We're, I'm the vice president. We're one of the owners of the, of the corners at the, at the Olmsted project, Town Center Project. And we just wanted to make sure that, you know, we have a couple of things that we have some concerns with, with the, with the road designs and things like that. So, thank you for the opportunity for speaking this afternoon. Proposed development looks fantastic, and it does. We're, we're on board with it. It will really be beneficial for the township and the community. The development will not only provide more offerings for the community, but will trigger improvements to utility infrastructure, roadways, and traffic flow. Getting these improvements designed correctly is crucial to having a successful town center. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the important work of the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works. The recent recommendations reflect a strong commitment to improving our region's infrastructure and addressing the needs of our growing and evolving communities. The proposal put forth covers a wide range of critical areas from roadway maintenance and traffic flow to stormwater management and utility infrastructure. These are not just technical issues. They directly affect the quality of life, safety, and long-term sustainability of our township. Today, I will be sharing a few comments, considerations in response to the department's recommendations. These observations are grounded in both stakeholders. My intent is to support a constructive dialogue that ensures any future improvements are not only technically sound but also aligned with the values and priorities of our residents. With that, I'd like to turn to a specific recommendation and comments on the proposed development by the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works regarding Resolution Number 250710-C and offer my additional feedback. I'm going to reference some of the comments and give some feedback on it. Can I do that now or should I do that later?
Obviously, there's a, there's somewhat of a time limit to this.
Okay.
And so, I'm not sure where Annette is on it, so...
One minute, 30 seconds.
Okay. So, I'm, what I'm going to, I'll brief, I'll make this brief, then. So, one of the things that we looked at is we went back and looked at the history of development of that intersection. And based on the development of the intersection, we've seen improvements to that intersection and the, the traffic flow every time there's been a construction on one of those corners. There was a drugstore. They added a lane onto the north on Sterns. And then, when there was a convenience store and some residential, they added two lanes on the south side of Sterns. And so, they've added seven lanes, or they have a total of seven lanes. They added four lanes over 14 years. We're looking at adding a project that is more than double of what has been added already. And there's no, there's no changes being offered to the intersection to account for that additional traffic. And that's one of the big concerns we have. One of the other concerns we have is the Sterns Road access being a full access in the fact that the way the ODOT rules read is that it's with 250, within 250 foot, there shouldn't be any crossing allowed going across that left-turn lane. And I think that the county's got it right, is that if that is allowed, there's going to be issues with that, with that intersection. And one of the things I'm always concerned about is if the intersection does not work well, it's not going to do anybody any good. It's just going to cause issues. And with those issues, people are going to try to avoid it. And that's what I'm concerned about. So, in general, I, like I said, we really do support the project. I think it's going to be great for the community. But we really need to look at how that traffic flow works and reassess that and make sure they're using correct numbers and we're, and we're really handling those roads the way they need to be.
Thank you. Thanks. And then?
I don't, I don't ask anyone to speak. That's up to the...
Yeah.
But you're not here, even.
I understand I'm not there, but I assume that you guys would want the trustees to speak on behalf of their...
I, I think when trustee, when we get to the items specifically, we'll talk about it. The intent was for public comment to hear from others right now on the project, but we'll hear from the trustees as we get into that, that item specifically.
Great. Thank you.
And then, is there anyone else?
No.
Okay. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 12, 2025 meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Second. Is there a motion made by the chair, seconded by Mayor Burke? Is there any questions or comments or changes to the minute? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Next item on the, is Resolution 250710A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is Resolution Number 250710-A. This is requesting approval of the amended bylaws. We have had four in total conversations of various provisions to the bylaws. I want to thank Law Department, Wesley Crutch. I know there's a committee. We had Sonny and Mayor Wheeler, sorry, Councilman Simon and Mayor Wheeler worked through it. And so, what we've done at this point in your packet was all the track changes have been accepted and all the modifications have been made to the bylaws. In your electronic packet that you received, the full appendices was in there, but given the length of that and given the size of the packet already, we did not print out that is part of the, the appendices as part of this packet, but they are, have been sent to you electronically. So, at this point, we are asking for an approval of the, to adopt the amended bylaws as were sent in your email and in your board packets.
Okay. Does anybody have questions in regards to what was in the packet and Mary somewhere on it? We're all in agreement. We've heard about the, this over the last few meetings, so... All right. I am going to make a motion, then, to approve the changes to the bylaws or approval of Resolution 250710A. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Kurtz. Any other further comments or questions on that item? All right. Seeing none. That's great. All right. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you. I think you heard a lot from me the last meeting, but today we have a very full agenda, and a lot of our team members here will be presenting. So, our first item is Resolution Number, sorry, second. Resolution Number 250710-B. This is for the Lakewood Public Arts Master Plan. So, the four projects you will hear about today are all sort of going to be new projects with the communities that were awarded through the Creative Planning Services Program applications.
Good afternoon, everyone. County Planning is seeking authorization to enter into a planning services agreement with the City of Lakewood for a public art master plan. I'll be working at Megan Chaney, along with my fellow senior planner Nicole Laird, under the management of Jim Sonhalter. So, just to provide a little snapshot into the public art landscape in Lakewood. Lakewood began a public art campaign in 2014. It was formalized in 2021 with the creation of the Public Art Advisory Board, whose mission was to advance the city's public art initiatives, support local artists, and educate residents about the importance of public art. The city dedicates $50,000 annually to public art, and that's distributed through processes of the Public Art Advisory Board. Currently, the city has 67 items of public art throughout the city, and you'll see them sprinkled in. I probably included more slides than I should have just as an excuse to include all the beautiful pieces of public art throughout the city. So, this plan will identify the processes used by the Public Arts Advisory Boards as well as detail their successes so far. It'll document the placement, themes, accessibility, diversity of themes of existing public art, identify past challenges to the installation and maintenance of public art, and also research different initiatives and perform case studies that have been employed throughout the country and the world. We're looking to cities in Europe that have had a strong public arts campaign as well. So, recommendations will identify a location geographically where the public art can go, what it could be, the, the character and form, the different types of innovative forms that it can, that can be used, including natural forms of art, temporary artworks, and interactive pieces of art. DEI, there's a strong focus. The city wanted to make sure that public art processes, the artists that are engaged, the different kinds of themes that are represented have a lens of diversity, equity, inclusion. And finally, we will be making recommendations directly on the processes employed by the Public Arts Advisory Board in order to improve efficiency on those DEI initiatives as well as identify new funding sources. So, we will be, a lot of input will be a part, and public engagement will be part of this plan. The, the project committee is four that will help guide this plan is made up of very knowledgeable city staff, members of the Public Art Advisory Board, as well as citywide institutions. A previous plan that we did a few years ago, the Madison, Madison Park Master Plan, featured some really innovative public engagement. We did a process in the schools that we engaged a bunch of different classrooms. They wanted to replicate that, that level of very intentional public engagement. So, we'll be working with the schools again, as well as doing stakeholder interviews, community engagements, public meetings. So, the plan will include five project phases, one project initiation, which is getting all of our decks in a row, like, like getting approval. Current conditions, that's details, the, where the, the challenges and opportunities are. Visions and recommendations, both in terms of different locations around the city as well as the types of art the city is interested in pursuing. Implementation, identifying funding, timeline, priority. And then, final plan and conclusion. So, the estimated project budget is roughly $97,000. The City of Lakewood will contribute $14,550. And work is estimated to be completed in June of next year.
Okay. That's great. Does anyone have any questions or comments from Megan?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the contract with the City of Lakewood for the Public Arts Master Plan, Resolution 250710-B. Can I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mayor Jones. Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. Okay. Next item is Resolution Number 250710-C, Olmsted Township, Olmsted Town Center Development Project, and your angle will be presented today.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. As we've heard already from the developers here, this is for approval of the Olmsted Town Center Development, the preliminary, preliminary master plan, phases, both Phases One and Two, which is a mixed-use development. I've indicated the location there. We're looking at the corner of Sterns and Bagley Road, both county roads. I believe seven parcels are included in that, which will be undergoing a consolidation. And so, the zoning on that is the Town Center Plan Development overlay. And then, again, just a location, just to orient everyone here. It is the northeast corner of Bagley and Sterns. So, you're going to have the overpass just to the left there and then to the south, Bagley Road. Some uses around that indicates more so commercial, along the lines of your typical kind of suburban development, to the north there being the railroad and single-family residential. To the south, again, the commercial retail plaza, the Swings and Things is located just south of the plaza there. And then, to the east, a single-family residential, west and southwest of the corner is commercial. So, looking at the CBS right adjacent to that and the catty corner is the Friendship Kitchen gas station. Just word. All right. So, just some history and background here. The site is currently vacant. The site features wooded areas and recently constructed medical, or recently constructed medical office on the eastern side of that, as indicated in the map. The initial application was submitted in May 2025. The applicant withdrew to address concerns and questions about the usable open space and the overall roadway design, both on and off-site. And that also includes the sidewalks, as, as has been previously mentioned. So, since then, they've been working with not only us, but our other internal partners to better align the Olmsted Township, or Olmsted Town Center preliminary plans with those regulations and the other applicable engineering standards with Public Works. And so, they resubmitted, ultimately resubmitted their now-application that you saw before you on June 10, 2025. And so, just to reiterate, this will be split into two phases. The first involving the development of the retail buildings to the south, and that includes commercial space for a new gas station, two fast-food restaurants and a grocery store, and an existing medical office to remain, again, on the eastern side of that site. Several retention ponds are included as part of the stormwater mitigation. And the existing wetlands to the north will remain, as mentioned, activated by multi-use trail on the southern border of that green space connecting to a public gazebo amenity space. And then, Phase Two will ultimately include 27 residential rental units and then behind that, another wet pond for stormwater controls. So, the proposal calls for private roads with two, with one-two-way entrance at the overpass. I probably shouldn't just go through, go to the map, actually. One-two-way entrance along Bagley with the public water and sanitary lines to be constructed during those improvement. Plan facing of the project, the plan itself calls for leased parcels. So, again, the combination of those existing parcels will need to take place before any preliminary plan approval. Ultimately, we're waiving that since we know that the owner is the applicant, and so, there should not... Ultimately, we're waiving that since we know that the owner is the applicant, and so there should not be any turnover with that. So, the applicant has included a breakdown of the open space in your packet. They cite that 3.84 acres of open space is provided, 3.69 is technically required based on the lot, but the land indicated does not meet certain criteria outlined in the land development regulations. For instance, some of the open spaces that they do denote, there's a minimum of 70 feet in width for some of that, as well as being contiguous. So, there's certain areas where it just quite, doesn't quite meet that. So, they have included a formal letter requesting those two one-time modifications to include the wetlands in the overall 20% calculations, and that's set in Section 106.8 of our land regulations, land use regulations. And that is an order to make up for those shortfalls. They are also requesting, again, that modification from the requirement set in 106.6, requiring sidewalks be located on both sides of the streets. Our code is very explicit in that requirement. I'm not gonna go through their, their overall reasoning, I think they kind of outlined that already, we can always redress that. So, moving forward into the comments, so pursuant to our regulations, we have distributed all of this to our agencies and received comments back. And so, we've reviewed the preliminary plans for the Olmsted Town Center subdivision. And with that, we kind of split it up in the staff report into two kind of recommendations. So, overall, we're recommending disapproval of the requested modifications in favor of the conditional approval in order to address the land development shortfalls, what they proposed, the reasoning for the recommendation, being that they failed to meet unusual topographical or exceptional environmental circumstances, as outlined in not only our regulations, but also RRC, that is direct language from the RRC there. They are not in the best interest of the public, as it impairs desirable development for the neighborhood, especially given connectivity, pedestrian connectivity and potential significant increases in traffic. We're looking at proximity to the school around .3 miles. We deem if there could be potential foot traffic with that, and proximity to other kind of amenities with folks walking, especially the Swings and Things right there as well. So, the intent of the 2020 land development regulations would not be met in regards to pedestrian flow and traffic movement, nor does it meet elements of the complete street designs referenced in Section 102, 101.2 in our regulations as well. But with that, in the spirit of working with the developer, we are recommending conditional approval, and this is across the board for all entities. I'm not gonna go through everyone's comments on this, but I do want to read off, just to get into the record, the planning conditions, that all provisions, and this is approval based on these conditions, all approvals of, all provisions of Section 106.6, sidewalks and walkways shall be met. All private roads shall have sidewalks running adjacent on both sides of the street, or any vehicular ingress, egress, access points are proposed. Pursuant to that, Section 106.6. And then, again, especially given to the campus, the school campus there, as well as other uses around there, commercial uses. Further attention should also be given to incorporating other crosswalk potentially. This is a bit out of scope, but it kind of falls into play, I think, with regards to how the overall street will be designed, Bagley, Bagley and Street, or Stearns intersection, how that pans out. Eliminate the overflow parking area. You can see kind of on the north end there, in this concept map here, that the parking area adjacent to the proposed wetlands, that could be eliminated, it's strictly overflow. To achieve more of that open space number, we're not necessarily saying they need to meet the full-blown 20%, but certain things can be eliminated to get closer to that. And then, again, just to make up for that 70-feet requirement as well, and lacking other places. And then, eliminate or reduce the size of some of the residential units in Phase 2. Again, this was just a recommendation to look into that, if that's a feasible action. Staff felt that some of these are definitely accomplishable. So, further activate the proposed open spaces along the streets, installing street furniture, benches, lounge chairs, shade devices, and their play equipment to further enhance the quality of life, and also further meet the requirements for our open space. So, they may not meet necessarily the 70-feet requirement, but if it's activated in some way, we, staff is under the impression that that would, that would count, and that could be a workaround. And then, also, as mentioned, we're recommending a conditional approval pursuant to the developer proposing and creating and entering into a development agreement with Olmsted Township and Cuyahoga County, stipulating funding to aid in paying for alignment and street scape enhancements with the proposed development along those portions of Bagley and Stearns roads that front the development. So, that concludes my staff report, and that was a lot of information. I will open it up to you all for any questions. We do have the trustees here.
So, I'd just like to make just one comment. In your packet, you do have all of the comments from all the other departments that provided feedback.
Yes.
And as well, at the request of the developer, they asked for a draft copy of staff report for this topic, so it was given in advance. And their response to that, those comments is also included in your packet, starting at page 118. So, you've got that in your packet as a response to, in advance of this meeting today.
Yes, thank you for that, Mary.
Okay, thanks, thanks. I know we have a few of the trustees here. At first, I just, we'll get to the trustees in a moment. I'd first like to hear if there's any comments or questions specifically from members of the board.
Just, just, Claire, you indicated the staff report was received by the developer.
In advance, yes.
When, how long ago did you get it?
Sent it on...
The second.
Second.
And that, their response was?
Their response was sent to us, it's in the packet, starting at page 118, it was dated July 3rd. Sorry.
Next day.
The next day.
Yeah, because there isn't, there was an original letter that was, I think, based on the preliminary submission with the response, and then this, page 118 starts the response to this current staff report.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? No?
Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, the recommendation to not have left-turn access into this development from Bagley.
Stearns, I think it is.
Is it Stearns or Bagley, which?
Stearns, Stearns.
I think it's Stearns, yeah.
Okay. Is that because of the proximity to the intersection? I have the wrong numbers.
Yeah, I think Eric is here to speak on it, but at the same time, there's some personnel from my own department, and Tom Sotek is here. So, I, Tom or Chris George, either of you want to just speak about, just, go ahead. Eric, do you have something to add?
No, I'm sorry, I just want to get the map up.
And my apologies, I have a different copy than you guys, so it's actually on page 73, is that letter in response to the staff report.
Our traffic consultant is here as well, if you'd like him to speak.
Yeah, which is, which is great. And I think, you know, if we, if we had an opportunity to look through the responses and whatnot, and understanding what came out of the Department of Public Works, it was specific that we were looking for additional traffic information. And, but I'll let Tom actually potentially come up. Tom, can you just come up and speak about what additional information you need in regards to that, that turn there?
Thanks, Mike. Tom Sotek, Department of Public Works. Welcome, everybody. I guess our main concern, in these, these, I don't think we've been, I don't think our concerns have been fully assessed by the report that was done by the consultant here. There's a lot of numbers in there, a lot of traffic, a lot, it's all good. We have concerns about site distance. There's already a significant queue in a PM rush for people making a left turn on Bagley. How's that affect the intersection? There's a lot of, there's a lot of decisions people have to make when they're gonna be turning out. It looks good on paper, but you're gonna have a right turn, exclusive right turn in only in there, so you gotta be looking out for that. Then you gotta be looking for through traffic, then you gotta be looking to see if someone's not coming out across the street at CVS. You gotta look to your right to make sure someone's not coming down the hill. My concern and our concern here is that, first of all, there's an area, there's a lot of elderly people out there. There's also a lot of inexperienced drivers with a high school down the street. So, I'm not saying this can't be worked out. I'm not saying this can't be worked out, but we have concerns about the operation of that intersection specifically. And our opinion should be right in, right out.
Tom, if I, if I could, there was some additional information you were requesting in regards to a traffic analysis. If I'm not mistaken, there was information provided about Lindberg and Bagley Road was a reference point.
Yeah, that wasn't specifically about this issue. I think that issue lends itself to overall, the overall level of, of the number of intersections at the intersection of Bagley and Stearns itself, future growth in the area, which we were concerned about that number. Again, that was in the report, and I think the engineer can speak to that. But that's kind of a little bit different topic than the operation of this driveway. It is, it is connected, because obviously, the, the level of service of the, the number, traffic volume going through the main intersection there in Bagley-Stearns, obviously, is gonna have an effect on this driveway, because it's, it's just right up the street from that. So, I, I don't know if that sufficiently answers your question, I guess, from our standpoint, of why we were concerned about that.
Mr. Chair, the, I guess, I guess, when I look at the map, the overall map, and I'm looking at the, the specific area that you're talking about, just across the street, just south of Bagley, is that shopping center and then Swings and Things, and there are curb cuts all throughout that area that allow for left turn and right turn.
The driveways, yes, the driveways, yes, the numbers and the volume, too. And don't forget you have, don't forget you have a horizontal curve, so someone, someone pulling out of that intersection, you have to look greater than, you're gonna have to look greater than 90 degrees. And don't forget, the way it's set up now with that cutout, you're gonna, the stop bar is back behind that intersection. So, you have to look up that road. Again, not saying it can't be done, the engineering hasn't been done to convince us that that's a good option. Convince us, that's all. That's all I'm saying, because, because there's a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of inexperienced drivers, you have a high school right down the street. So, I know that, I guess, none of the, none of the, none of the traffic signals met the first three warrants for traffic volumes, so on and so forth. But I guarantee you, down the road, one of these is gonna meet warrant seven.
Thanks, Tom. Anything further? Is there any other questions from the group at first, from the board members? If not, I'd like at least the trustees to be able to step forward, and if they have any general comments.
Will we have an opportunity to respond to that commentary, or?
We should.
No, the opportunity, I'd like to hear from the trustees first, before we'll come forward with that.
I need to sit.
Sorry, Eric.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
First of all, I'd like to say that I do apologize that I have not been able to attend these meetings. I have been extraordinarily ill, as some of you have known. I was in and out of the hospital most of 2024. I am getting on, back on my feet here in 2025. Normally, I'm very engaged with this board, I have been previous years. So, I do apologize that I have not been here, so I wanted to set the record straight first on that. The second thing that I'd like to, to interject here is a number of things. I want to take you back, I have been on this board since 2016. I worked with the trustees prior for 10 years, I volunteered in many, many capacities, and on many committees. So, I'm very familiar, so it's a 20-year commitment I have made to Olmsted Township. In 1995, we drafted a master plan, and in that master plan, now this is 30 years ago, the trustees laid out that this town center was critical to our move ahead. 30 years has passed, and the trustees from Sherry Lipis, which I know many of you know, Sherry Lipis, Janine Kress, Tiffany Fishbach, Scott Ross, myself, numerous other trustees, we have all worked together towards this same common goal. We have put zoning in place, we have created subdivision regulations. We are a limited home rule township, so we do enact quite a bit of power with a few exceptions. And so, we're different than most other townships. There are, there's some home, other home rule townships. The other thing that I'd like to point out is that we function like a city. We are an anomaly here in Olmsted, in Cuyahoga County, because we're the only functioning township, the only other township has 100 residents. We have about 17 teetering on 18,000 residents, big difference. So, we function just like a township, just like a city, except we don't collect an income tax. It is critical, in 2014, we put together zoning that was passed with a lot of community engagement. In 2019, we created a comprehensive plan with a lot of community engagement over a year, and solidified our position with these 18,000 residents, that this is what we needed to have to move our township forward. We're very heavily residential, we desperately need economic development. This is our driver moving forward, it must happen. If it does not happen, we are in serious trouble. This must happen, I can't express to you how much it can't happen. Now, as far as left-hand left out on, I wanted to say a couple more things, I'm not gonna belabor the point. We have worked with Guide Studio at a tune of about $100,000. We have worked with OHM, it's probably gonna cost us more than $200,000. And we've also engaged with a bond counselor and a municipal finance person to drive this project forward. We have had many opportunities to develop, many. Carnegie Management is the only one, since, we've been working with them since 2019, and they have bought into the vision. They have attended every Guidestone meeting, every OHM meeting, heavily engaged with the community, heavily engaged with us. This development meets all of our subdivision regulations, all of them. We also, I need to tell you, is unlike any other township in the state, we hold our MS4 permit, which means we had to create our own stormwater regulations that are reported to the EPA. That speaks volumes to the, to the type of township we are, very, very, very different. So, I would say our regulations that have been in place and that we have used for these many years trumps any regulations created anyplace else, because if, and the Rehire Advice Code is, does not speak one way or the other, does the subdivision regulations for the county, or does the subdivision regulations for the township, for a township, which one trumps which? Well, according to the Rehire Advice Code, it's silent. We have had our regulations in place for many, many years. I would think that from the strength of our commitment and our community, and what we have put into our community all these years, should take precedent. As far as the, the traffic flow in and out, I want to bring up Mr. Beck. Though I am very, very grateful that he has invested in our community about five years ago, that is the only game in town, in 10 square miles, which is what Olmsted Township is, there is only one, one gas station, and he's it. And so, now here comes a gas station, a pretty well-known franchise gas station, do you see where I'm going here? And so, there are, though he may have concerns, I would give you, I can give you information on feet that are close to, that are both in and out off of Stearns Road, right there. They use the same traffic company that Carnegie Management used, the exact same traffic company. There is no, but this is competition, so I wanted to address that. Tom, I love your passion, you're as passionate as I am, you know what I mean? We're both fiery, we're both very passionate about how we feel. I am going to propose to you that, and I know that, that the left, now we're talking about Stearns, coming down off of Stearns, Carnegie has agreed that they will do a curb cut right out only, correct? But coming down Stearns, we will allow a left-hand turn, that is extraordinarily reasonable. There's no reason in the world why that can't happen. As far as open space is concerned, those 10 parking lots are adjacent to, guess what, a gazebo, that they are, that Carnegie has committed to erecting. They have put in, they are putting in, and as part of our plan, putting in benches and lights. All of that is part of our streetscaping, that we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars already to put in place. So those need to stay. As far as open space is concerned, our regulations, our subdivision regulations state very clearly that they can use wetlands as open space. There is no reason not to allow that to happen. I see no justification for it. It, there, there's a sidewalk that goes over half of it that people can traverse through. As far as the sidewalk going in, if you look at the sidewalk going in, you'll see that it's going to, it's going to create a conflict with the drop, with, with pedestrians. You don't want that sidewalk bent in like that. It's dangerous. I can, I can give you more specifics with our, our township administrator, who also happens to be an engineer, and that can tell you that it's dangerous as far as the township is concerned to force them to put this additional sidewalk in. What, what Carnegie Management has put in place is everything that we have worked for, for the past two years with Guide Studio and with, with OHM. We have had numerous community engagements, numerous meetings with all stakeholders in all areas. This has been a comprehensive approach that we have looked to this. So I'm asking you to please, after 30 years of blood, sweat and tears that every single trustee has, has done to make this development a reality, I'm asking you to please grant what needs to happen, approve the plan as designed, and let's put this to bed and move forward so the township can begin their economic renaissance. This is the only way that it can happen. And that's all I have to say.
I'm Riley Alton. I'm one of the trustees. Thank you all for your service on the planning commission. I will add just a little bit to what my colleague very clearly articulated. But first, I want to thank, in addition to our township administrator, Gary Alonoski, our other staff person who's been taking the lead on a lot of this, Justin Reed, is our building commissioner, has been working really hard on this. Trustee Tom Cole is also here in the back. I want to acknowledge him. I agree that this project serves as an exciting catalyst, an opportunity for future growth, not just in this area, but also in the other undeveloped areas near the town center. And I'm confident that between the developer's willingness to work with the county on a development plan with the township and with the conditions that have been expressed within reason, that this will be a great project to move the township forward. I also just want to note, in terms of the discussion of open space, we've had numerous discussions, not only with the developer, but with the county about, you know, utilizing those wetlands, not just keeping them there as, you know, counted towards open space, but having kind of paths and walking trails and making it truly an amenity for the public and making it publicly accessible. So I do think it is reasonable to count those towards the open space. My only concern, and I think this will be addressed in the remainder of the process, is I would really like to see a right turn lane on Bagley Road. I think that requires collaboration between the township, the county and the developer. And I think we can, we can get there. And we are also going through the process right now of updating, we actually just passed an agreement in our last board meeting to update our overall township zoning code. I'm hopeful that there will be more alignment in the future between county subdivision regulations and the township's regulations so that we can avoid any kind of confusion or miscommunication to developers or to the county moving forward. So that is, that's all I have. Thank you all very much.
Trustee, appreciate it. Board members, do we have any further comments or questions?
Just a little question.
Mayor Kurtz?
The, I noticed that the road narrows going westbound on Bagley to one lane. And is there a reason why you don't have a right turn lane there?
At the intersection?
At the intersection.
Well, currently, related, I'm sorry. I have it up on the Google map.
Right.
It doesn't appear that any of that is currently on Bagley. Is that correct, the center turn lane? Or do I have an old memory?
I'll go back to Eric.
Stop short, I think, doesn't it?
There's probably another slide with the proposed right.
Yeah.
So we're talking about west of the intersection?
I'm sorry.
West, but is that water retention, is that retention in the corner?
Eric. I'm sorry, yeah. So the
Page two actually shows.
Is that retention?
The slides they provided, yeah, so.
Is that determined in the slides they provide in a distant condition?
That's, that's not, as far as I know, it's not an existing.
But that's what, what was referenced as the future county project, a center turn lane?
Yes.
Turn lane?
Yeah.
Center left turn.
Right.
Okay. Well, this one, I guess here.
It shows both ways.
Yeah. And I don't know if that shows it on that particular.
Do we have? On page two, it shows.
Yeah, is that retention in the corner, water?
Yeah, on the east side, yes.
And is that, there's a platform, is that to get back into it? There's a curb cut?
That's to get into the development.
Into the, into the.
You're looking at.
That's an existing.
That's all, yeah, yeah.
For maintenance.
Oh, yes, right. That would go away unless the county needs it for maintenance.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a map at one point that had a 2026 build, and that was outlined, I believe, in the turning lanes on Bagley.
We tried to strip down our package to make it shorter for you all, but we have that material. And Mayor, I just want to note that we have proposed this development agreement approach where we would put the money associated with the proposed improvements in escrow for the benefit of the township and the county to utilize at their discretion to execute these improvements. That's our way of trying to show our willingness to collaborate to arrive at the best possible product we can.
And lane widening and stuff.
Lane widening, realignment, signal adjustments, any concerns that Mr. Sotek may have, we can try to address them when that comes around.
And one last, one more question if I may. You mentioned you had long-term leases from, from substantial users. Define long-term.
15 years. 20 years. 20 years and 15 years. Yeah. Three 15-year.
How do you know if there are fives or 10s?
No, no. No, no. And for, for commercial, that's very significant.
Stability. We're looking for stability.
And Mayor Kurtz, just for the record, of the more than 215 properties that we've developed in our 45-year history, we've sold less than five.
Okay. Well, that's stability.
Yeah.
Yes. We do, too.
Mayor Weiss? For purposes of the request today, can we look through each of the open issues and just have what, what's open still or what's not? Because I heard some combinations, but I'm not sure if that's formal acceptance, saying we will, we will do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing that, Eric. Can you provide us, do you have that to put on the screen here or?
As, as far as like the
The open items, conditional approvals.
Like, for instance, on the, on the open area, sort of what's the bid in the ass?
We, yeah, so.
How much are we short, how much technically short?
Yeah, it was a little complicated with some of that, just the way their numbers were broken down. And I don't know if Morgan would, could speak more to this.
Yeah, we'd love to. Morgan or Mr. Coin?
I would say they put together an exhibit, and let me try to find it here.
We can speak to it very clearly.
I'm here as land use counsel. We've been working on this for a period of time. There are three, really three open issues. And I've already talked to Greg Huth, and I've talked to the legal counsel for the township about a development agreement.
Your name is?
Anthony Coyne, land use counsel to current business. So if we could maybe put up a site plan so you can see the three open issues, we've already agreed to work with the county and the township to put a development agreement in place. So if there are reasonable conditions that need to be addressed, we'll integrate them into the development agreement. Mr. France already pointed out, we've done an initial, initial cost estimate for the streetscape improvements. It's well over a half million dollars. We're willing to deposit that at escrow to address those issues as they have to be developed. But I do believe that the, the site plan itself, Morgan could probably walk you through it pretty easily so that you'd understand, particularly the sidewalks, the open space and the left turn, right turn issue on Sterns. It's actually pretty straightforward if you have the site.
That's helpful to the board members? All right. Ian?
Yeah, sir. So we're just walking through the outstanding issues, correct? So number one is the open space requirement. You'll see the upper left-hand corner of the screen, the northwest wetland, that's approximately 3.11. Oh, yes. Thank you.
It's dangerous.
I know I've got long arms, but.
It won't work on the TV, it won't work on the TVs, the reflection, I think.
It might not work on the TV, yeah.
On the screen behind you.
Okay. Turning their neck.
You're shooting the ceiling.
There we go, okay. Everybody see it?
You can get the map.
Move to the side a little bit.
Yeah, you're on the side. There we go, okay. So the first issue that we want to highlight is this wetland. This is the open space that we want to allocate for use of the wetland. The wetland parameters, or sorry, the open space boundaries are approximately defined by my, my trace here. So we don't have any point in which our open space is less than 70 feet. And the, the bulk of the open space is occupied by this wetland, but it's all going to be utilized for passive recreation. And we additionally have provided areas of, of meadow-like buffering between the commercial and the residential users to show, an attempt to create a, areas of opportunity for active recreation to be in keeping with the spirit of the county code and subdivision regulations. But the only way which we can strictly conform to the contiguous nature of open space regulations is to utilize that wetland. So that's, that's the first item. The second item is this curb cut on the Sterns. And I would like for Andy to, to talk about, our, our traffic consultant at TMS, he can give support data as to why we believe that this, this curb cut is more appropriate to be a full access curb cut. But at a minimum, we need the right in, right in cover, sorry, left in, coming off of Sterns into the development, a right out, coming out of the development on the Sterns, and a right in coming north on Sterns into the development as well. That's critical for our development to move forward. And the Sheetz gas station actually has a termination right, that if we do not achieve this minimum of a right in, right out, left in, then we lose this tenant. They are required to tend for the rest of the center to move forward. So this is, this is the cornerstone. This is the anchor in addition to our other tenants as well. So that is, that is a primary concern to us. And Andy can speak to the specific engineering that we've done to showcase that this shouldn't be a concern. We have done engineering. We performed, I think now, four revisions to our traffic impact analysis utilizing, Andy, was it three, three different site visits to collect data?
Two.
Two, two, two site visits. So we've collected a lot of data, a lot of data at this site to influence the traffic impact analysis. And the third item is the sidewalks. So you'll notice that on the phase two portion, the residential, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, which would be in conformance with the county subdivision regulations. And once we get down into the commercial component, we have chosen to bikercade and keep the pedestrian traffic on one side of the street where there is no conflict of movement between pedestrians and vehicles. If you introduce sidewalk on the south side of the street, it's in conformance with the county subdivision regulations, you now cross one commercial, one commercial access drive, two commercial access drives, three, you move on down the list, and we have to get technical with it. Now it comes to four, five and six. And I'm missing one.
The main entry.
The main one.
Main entry, yes, thank you, yes. And not only do we believe that that creates a significant safety risk for pedestrians and, and Eric in his reports specifically called up proximity to the school, and our concern is that we are very close to the middle school, and now we're introducing extra patterns of conflict between pedestrians and vehicles for users who might be under 12. That's, that's a concern to us as well. Additionally, we just don't have the space to put in a sidewalk on both sides of the street. So this, this aisle, the central drive aisle, is our primary access into the site that facilitates movement for offsite visitors into the residential, into the pavilion area, into the town center park, the parking area that serves the, the passive amenity recreation facility. If we were to put a sidewalk on this side, we lose the boulevard-like aesthetic, the environment, the, the continuation of the township's streetscape into the center of the development, and it now becomes just concrete on either side of that primary access drive. Those are the, I know I was a little long-winded there, but I think it was time to explain that.
Mayor Kurtz?
On the second issue relative to the traffic, assuming you've accommodated and it's the traffic, the teams have coordinated the ability to manage tanker trucks, truck traffic for the
We've done different movements.
Softening it, it's, you should make sure it's very generous in terms of softening the radiuses because you don't want pedestrians on that side of the road and a tanker truck trying to accommodate you to the gas station. And so I think that's really important. And the other thing is, I'm not sure if there's a traffic study or there's signalization study that's planned for the corner, for the intersection of Sterns and Bagley, but I would definitely want some type of pulsing of that for the future.
We did. Yeah. That was part of our traffic.
It was part of our traffic.
And just for clarification, Sheetz is, I think, one of the best operators in the country, and they, they've already gotten site plan approval, but they did all of that when they presented it to, to the township. So they used all those traffic studies and all the GIS stuff to show that it works very, very effectively. And one thing, just a reminder, we, there are only two new curb cuts that are on, on Bagley Road for that length, because the ones that exist in curb cut for the medical office building. So that's it, two, adding two, two curb cuts, that's it.
If I could add something to specifically lead it, your concern, Mayor Kurtz, is that not only did we and our engineers provide a truck maneuvering exhibit and provide these analyses to determine what are our radiuses, what's safe for truck maneuvering, so did all of our tenants. So we've now had four, five truck maneuvering analyses done for the individual sites and the site as a whole to determine that there won't be any issues.
For every one of our tenants, by every one of our tenants.
Just want to make sure safety is approached.
Safety is paramount.
That's why we, yeah.
Thank you.
And the CBS across the street. Questions on the.
Ground, no.
None.
Questions?
Mayor Weiss? Come back to the open area, just to confirm, how much of the wetlands would you, to meet the open space, how much?
We don't lose, there's a certain percentage of the wetlands that we're going to have to impact for the commercial users, less than five acres. The rest of the wetlands stays wetland. So it becomes a form of conservation easement for the dual purpose of having passive recreation for residents and preserving the natural aesthetic and natural habitat of all the
And in doing so, it's somewhat of a hardship for us because it has compressed the available land that could have otherwise been income-producing or otherwise allowed us the flexibility to plan it accordingly. So we really, you know, and it's, it's been a double-edged sword when we try to be good stewards of the, of the land and, and the conservation approach, and yet we're being penalized for it because we've done so.
And I just wanted to add, Mr. Engel made the comment about that extra overflow parking field and how the county feels like that can go away. That wasn't originally in the plan. We added that at the request of the township because if somebody were to, say, want to have a birthday cake at the gazebo and people are going to be coming in via vehicular access, where are they going to park? How are they going to be able to utilize this beautiful green space that we're creating if we don't have a way for them to get there other than by foot or by bike, which we hope most people take the shoelace express, but we can't plan that way. We need to plan so that way it can be actively utilized by the majority of the township.
I'd, I'd like to add with regard to the movements and what Tom had mentioned at the intersection, you know, it's one thing to feel that it's maybe not appropriate, or we don't like it, or it's not necessarily, doesn't pass the smell test. Well, unfortunately for us, we deal in facts. And we've had serious studies based on industry guidelines, guidelines set by the county, guidelines set by the Ohio Department of Transportation. We've had our expert qualified in evaluating it and making recommendations based on all of that data, and we're prepared to back it up. And that's how we arrive at the movements that we've established here for this project and we, and, and how we've relied upon it and the representations that we've made to our tenants.
Mayor Weiss? Sorry, one, one last question. The document that you've discussed.
Yes.
What issues are subject to the development? So is the open area a part of that or is that just traffic?
No, and it would be if there were conditions imposed that are acceptable to the applicant by the commission, we would include them. In the meantime, the development agreement included deposit in escrow of funds to cover the streetscape improvements as they get installed. Originally, we're talking about a development agreement, which would be just with the township and the applicant, but we've talked to Greg Huth about it as well, and it would likely be. And it would likely be a three-party development agreement. We'd probably have to discuss where the funds would be deposited, but to make sure that the streetscape is going to be covered when it goes in.
I just want... Can I reiterate one more time? They meet our subdivision regulations that we've had in place. They do not, they're in conflict with the county. But in their high revised code, it's silent as to who trumps whose. So, I would request that you take our subdivision regulations that we have invested blood, sweat, and tears, and lots of time, and lots of community input over county regulations that which have changed. And ours are what they are.
If I could, then I'm just going to turn to Wes briefly. And I don't know if our county law department has opportunity to weigh in on this.
I've not been presented with this issue before today, but I had the chance to meet with my colleague Greg Huth in the law department just outside briefly. And he pointed me to Ohio Revised Code, Section 504.13, which discusses building and standard codes, the effect of county adoption of building and standard codes. And specifically, paragraph B, D1, which states, "No township that adopts the limited home rule form of government shall adopt a code described in Division A of the section in any county that has adopted a code dealing with the same matter to be regulated." I will point out, Division A is quite long, but it includes codes regarding machinery, piping, boiler, heating, air conditioning, any code pertaining to fire hazards, fire prevention. And it's qualified by this including, but not limited to, language. So, if you're asking me off the rip to make an opinion at this moment, I would say that the county code would prevail based on Section 504.13b1 of the Revised Code. So, I respectfully would disagree with the trustee's view at this time.
I'd also like to further add, I think when the trustee speaks of subdivision regulations, she's speaking to the township's zoning resolution, which they handle zoning. Ultimately, as set in ORC 711, the subdivision regulations fall on the county regardless, right? So, like, the limited home rule allows for them to adopt their own zoning resolution. However, we are still, we have to still adhere to the subdivision regulations, which falls under our purview. So, I think just to clarify that for everyone, when she speaks to their subdivision regulations, I think she's speaking to the zoning resolution.
The commission can allow modification to that, and I agree. It's a gray area on this particular issue because it's not specifically enumerated in the Ohio Revised Code.
Right.
I appreciate that input. Tom, I'm just going to go back to the traffic analysis. You asked for additional information in regards to that turn on Stearns Road. Can you elaborate a little bit on what type of additional information you're looking for?
Well, first of all, I don't want to get in an arguing match with fellow engineers or people here because we all have our opinions, but the numbers will bear out what they are at the end of the day. So, I'm... And as far as the four driveway locations, I think we're probably fine with that. We don't have a big disagreement with that. The final operation of that, maybe that's something we're going to have to discuss, okay? So, overall, I think, where else are you going to put the driveways? It makes sense to me, right?
Right.
And first of all, and another thing too personally from us, I have nothing against your development at all. Absolutely. So, I hope you're, you know, it looks good. Looks good to me. But, you know, the operation of our roadways is very important. We are responsible for that. The ORC is crystal clear. The county is responsible for county highways and townships. So, there is a discrepancy. Again, I don't want to get into those numbers right now. You know, you said this, we said... There is... So, our concerns are, I think it was in the document of the paper there. We have concerns about the latest traffic count that was done. Not, and I don't know why, it just seems, it concerned us why there was a deviation in the numbers between what we counted and actually what was counted by your engineer back in 18. There is a discrepancy that we don't know, and it concerns us a little bit because we want to know, how is the intersection going to operate going forward? Are those numbers real? Those are something we just want to find out. We want to get to the bottom of. And I don't know if the township's 10% growth or 5% growth, but I don't think it's .25 or whatever it is. It's not. What's the right number there? And again, I just want to have a baseline so everybody who has a development, they're happy with and they can live with in the future. That's the only thing here. Not against anybody or whatever. We just want to make sure it's done right. That's critical to us. So, I think we're just missing some data there, or, you know, maybe it can be rectified. We're not saying we can't come to some agreement. I don't think we're insinuating that. You know, we just want to make sure we have the right numbers to go forward with the project that's in everybody's best interest, makes the developers look good, makes the township looks good, and hopefully makes us look good, or decent at the end of the day. I don't know what good, but I don't know if we can look good, but...
I agree with you. Because I'm not arguing because, and I respect that, but again, there's an old saying about we're entitled to our own opinion, but we're not entitled to our own facts. We presented the data. We've done extensive studies with very good firms. And I think that's really important to know. And I know you have some concerns about growth and the future. That's always a concern in every community. We've got to work with the data that we have and this community's master planning and zoning process.
I don't want to bring this up, but you're doing this from 40 miles away. I don't want to bring that up. I mean, and that's why I don't want to bring, because I think we can fix that. But that's, that is important, isn't it?
Tom, what did you say?
More than half miles away? I didn't hear what you said.
The data, the data point that showed, that they used was from an ODOT, ODOT 10s.
I got you. Okay.
So, it was from Lindbergh and Bagley, which is in the city of Berea, and it showed very little growth.
Okay, I got you.
My concern was it's not kind of, you know, and to the engineer's point that there was a data set missing, so according to ODOT, there's a cookbook formula that they use to, you have to have five data points, right? So, they...
We follow the rules.
But I'm not saying you're wrong, right?
But how do we get to that point if we do everything per the standards and the requirements, and you're telling us that it doesn't feel right? Well, does it? We would...
Well, all right, gentlemen, thank you. Thanks. Please. Can we appreciate that?
Did your speak to this?
Yes.
I think...
Go ahead.
Tom Sotek has offered his thoughts on additional analysis that he was requesting. I'll let the engineer close out your comments on this. Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, as far as the data goes, from the growth rate perspective, we can only use the historical data that's available to us. We take the data from the ODOT website. The location at Stearns had four data points. One of the data points, this location was on Bagley, just west of Stearns. One of the data points was collected during the detour, showed almost a doubling of increase. HNTB's data at that location and our data at that location, both had returned to a level closer to what it had been pre-construction. Our previous count, 2018, is seven years old. Nobody, it's not applicable to use the traffic data seven years old, except for looking at historical data. I think a lot has occurred in the last seven years in the country to affect traffic. We took the closest location with available data. I think we're looking for then, if that's not acceptable, what should we be using? Because the other data points aren't there. And when we're trying to do historical data, obviously, the more data, the more reliable data you have, provides a better analysis. If we just take two random points, it's not as reliable as five data points or three data points. So, that's why that section was chosen.
Can you state your name? Sorry, just...
I'm sorry. My name is Andy Comber with TMS Engineers.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to clarify, we want to confirm we can get the left-in, which is the safest movement. And I think Mr. Sotek would agree, the left-out is the more problematic one, which we are okay with not having, right? So, long as we have the right-in, right-out, and left-in.
Just left-in.
Yes.
Yes, which we feel is a very reasonable compromise.
Yes.
All right. Board members, I, you know, you've heard a lot of information here. I'd love to be able to hear your thoughts on it. Obviously, the planning, the planning commission has pulled together their recommendations. And many of those recommendations, well, a few of those recommendations are being disputed. And basically, the development and the township is asking for us to overturn some of those recommendations. So, I'd love to hear more information from the board members on our approach forward with this matter.
I have a question.
Sure, Mark.
A question about the parking, the overflow parking. Another county has recommended removing that and using that for green space. If there's, is there on-street parking in the residential area?
No, there is not.
There's not? Okay. That, my second question then, is there a possibility of doing any shared parking with like the other retail establishments around?
Not in a formal, on our site or on adjacent sites?
That, well, you have like the grocery store, fast food restaurants, they have plenty of parking typically. And developments like this, there's always plenty of parking. Like, there's, you know, a lot of spaces that are vacant, so, are empty. So, is there a possibility that they could utilize some of those spaces?
I'm going to expect... Formally, no. Practically, I would say yes.
Okay.
But we can't have our, all of our tenants required to have protected areas associated with their respective parking so that way they can ensure their customers have adequate spaces.
And we would prefer to segregate that if at all possible.
Could our building commissioner speak to us? So, I'm Justin Reed, building commissioner, Alstair Township. So, from my understanding, they do have shared parking throughout the site between their retail tenants already. I believe the township's understanding about having this parking out here is to provide a more accessible location for members of the community to drive, to park, to utilize this passive open space. So, that's the idea behind it. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that the parking is pretty far away for the retail units to get to that point. And so, that's to help provide an area that residents can use. Furthermore, with the residential aspect, I believe it would be beneficial for parking of guests of those residential units as well because it is located directly adjacent to that residential area. So, I do feel that that's an important component to be able to justify and utilize that wetland as a passive open space. And I also feel it's a key component to the residential piece there. That's our understanding.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from...
I completely understand, just from my perspective, the blockway space that's currently provided here seems to be adequate. And if you put in more, in my opinion, it's just a lot more concrete and taking away from some of the landscape components to that. I just don't know enough about the traffic situation. But, you know, I ask the question about what's the situation across the street? There's no restriction on that, and we're talking about creating some... It's a good idea not to have that left, what is it, the left-out?
Correct.
That's right.
Because of safety, that's obviously, looking at the map, that makes sense. But it seems to make sense to me in that regard. So, I'm okay with those components. I just, I don't understand what's happening on Bagley because this map shows future planes that aren't currently there. So, I don't know whose responsibility that is.
That would be part of the development agreement.
That would be part of the development.
Well, that's part of the development.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that makes sense now. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was going to make a motion, not a comment, so...
Oh, just a couple, just a couple questions. I mean, your success is going to be predicated on traffic management.
No question.
Get people in and out. And if I lived back in the residential portion, I wouldn't want to be logjammed to get out in and out of my residential structure.
Right, true.
In terms of, I agree with my colleague in terms of the softening of the sidewalk recommendation and need. But I really think traffic is going to be the challenge for the future. If this is going to be as dynamic as the township and everyone suggests, and you need, you need traffic. And so, if you don't get that intersection right and upset everybody in the township and everybody that gets through that intersection, it's going to just reflect on the success of this development.
I agree.
The other question I had last is the escrow of the Mott money. Is the township responsible for releasing that money?
We still are going to work that out with Mr. Matthews and probably Mr. Huth. I don't know if he's talked to you about it, but we...
You don't need too many people in hands in the tail. Show me, township.
I agree.
And the business people, just work it out.
No, it'd probably go with the township because it's their streetscape.
Yeah, their response. Ultimately, they're going to succeed.
And we would just consult with us and the county when they're going to be expanded.
Okay, just needed clarification.
But we'll work that out.
And Mayor, I would just add on the traffic piece, we agree with you. And that's why we have been so diligent in our analysis of this intersection.
Thank you. And also, the development agreement, we'll allow that to be further vetted. Thank you.
Questions?
Mayor Weiss?
Just to add, I've found out maybe what the motion is. I don't have an issue with the calculation with the size of...
So, the motion, just to be clear, what are we, what are we, what do you have?
Unconditional approval. It seems like there is, there's some conditional approvals on a number of these items.
I would just, I mean, we might want to break this into two, Wesley, since there is one that's recommending disapproval of those three criteria, which it sounds like board, it sounds like they might want some flexibility in that. And then the second one being conditional approval with the other pieces with all the staff reports on all other areas. I'm not sure, Eric, your thoughts, or Tom?
Can I say something again about the driveways? Like I said, we're okay with the locations of the driveways. I don't know that just today, what you're doing, approval, disapproval. They will still have to get approval from the county for a right-of-way permit to operate.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we have, I think we have some details to flesh out here, which I'm pretty confident we'll be able to do that.
Yep.
So, I, just so you know that it's not like if this is approved today, it's done.
Oh, we still have a long road.
This is a preliminary plan, so any conditions that are outlined in here as conditional approval, they must be met before we can approve.
Right.
So, it's a directional approval.
It's a directional approval.
More with staff on that. We recognize this.
And, yeah, I was going to say, just to also reiterate this, I mean, reading off the planning stipulations, that's directly tied to our subdivision regulations. So, if we're just focusing on that particular document, this, what they're asking for modifications for, there's two things, right? It's the 20% open space and the sidewalks on both sides. So, if we're just limiting it to that, I do agree with Mary. I think if you all and the trustee's okay with that, providing just a motion for the modification piece, and then we'll move into the conditional.
Mr. Chairman, could that, could that particular motion include to keep the overflow parking?
I don't see why.
Could that be wrapped into that motion?
I may. Maybe this will clarify. According to 104.5, Part V of our subdivision regulations, and this is with respect to a preliminary plan application, just want to make clear. The board can approve the application as submitted, approve the application with specific conditions or modifications, disapprove the application, and a fourth option, which I don't believe is being considered today, is to table the application at the request of the applicant. I don't think that last one is on the table, no pun intended. But I just want to give the board an outline of what the rule provides for and what its options are when presented with this kind of application.
So, Mayor Jones, if you want to wrap all that into the motion, I don't see why that couldn't take place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But there's still, so in addition to sort of onsite, those amendments that might be considered, would then a separate motion be made to allow for left-turn access off of Stearns?
Is that what it ultimately is? Is it a second motion on that? It sounds like there's still conversation ahead on that.
I don't think we're... You can approve that as part of the preliminary plat, approval. We still, we ultimately have to give them a permit to operate in our right-of-way and cut into our right-of-way.
That's right.
So, that's a whole separate procedure. And don't forget they have to get an easement for the driveway yet.
Right.
So, there's a whole...
So, Mayor.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to, is it, Mary, is the verbiage disapproved of the conditions? Of the following conditions?
So, it is, these were modifications were the first piece. And so, the other piece is all the conditional approval based on all the feedback on the plan. I think that's where I'd maybe point to legal, like, is it a Resolution Number 250710CA? And then B, is it, does there need to be two separate motions, or can they all be wrapped into one? And then B, is it, does there need to be two separate motions, or can they all be wrapped into one?
I, I, my impression is, I think it can be wrapped into one, because the application itself is being considered right now. And so the board with respect to that preliminary plan application may approve it as submitted. That's option one. Option two is you can approve it with specific conditions or modifications, which I believe the mayor.
I think we're clear on the preliminary plan was listed as a conditional approval.
Right.
However, the modification is where those three items come up. And so staff report and permission was that it was disapproval, but if, it's the board's decision if there's a way to make those somehow conditional approval as well and work through those issues, or then it's all one motion.
Do we need to work through the language and maybe we move on to another item, or do you want to just hammer this out as we speak?
Mister Chairman, I'm, I am willing to move on with the rest of the items and then come back to the correct language that we would need. I am not in favor of tabling.
Yeah, I, I'm full agreement on that also. And I'm wondering if both Eric and Wesley can get together and incorporate those items within the motion so that we can take that item back up. So I'm just suggesting table the item for the moment, so we can go through the remainder items, and then they'll come back with the appropriate language.
If I could maybe just.
Miss Coyne, go ahead.
Been around this block a little bit. Motion could be made, subject to the following three modifications. Open space, sidewalk removal, left turn in from sterns.
That's it?
And it's it.
I think there's a little bit more detail, I appreciate it, and I know you're an expert.
We still have to do the development agreement on all the other, you know, the escrow, turf cuts, easement.
I, I, since I'm not the subject matter expert, so, and I don't know, miss, if, yet, if Mr. Engel is willing to sign off on, and I loosely, sign off on the proposed modifications by Mr. Coyne. I just, if I could, like to just chat with him about what's being discussed, to see if that is what, in fact, through you, Mary, we'd like to present to the board for its approval.
I think the board is in agreement that we'd like to get this packaged up to here together. I'm suggesting table it for a moment, you guys go outside there, talk it through quickly, and bring the information back to us so I can get through the remainder of the board agenda items. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, that's good.
Perhaps if Craig's available, maybe.
Mayor Burke?
I'd like to move that we take resolution number 250710-C and take it from the spot on its agenda right now and move it to the end of the resolution.
I'll second that. So it's being moved to the last item on the agenda. So with that being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
We can, you guys work on that, come, you got 15 minutes. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item.
Okay.
Village of Valleyview master plan, 25071.
Rachel Novak will be presenting this, she will be the lead planner on this project. I do know that we had an informational presentation by Kevin.
Tom, give them the comments when in our office.
Or they can go to ours. They can go to ours. So we may not have time, Kevin, to have that, but we can proceed with the action items. Turn it over to Rachel, thank you.
All right, I am gonna keep this short and sweet. So this is exciting, hopefully Mayor Burke, you should be excited as well. There's gonna be a lot of collaboration, I think. So we're requesting approval of the resolution authorizing us to enter into a professional planning services agreement with the Village of Valleyview for a comprehensive master plan. Is it going? There we go. So.
It's a little sticky.
It is. Oh, no.
Your lady Kevin, there we go.
Okay. So Valleyview's current master plan was adopted in 2000, so we're looking at a plan that's, you know, 25 years old, basically, which is well beyond the normal lifespan of a typical master plan. So the document's outdated, and thinking back to their application, just some of the points that they hit on is outdated. Really no, no longer reflects the village's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and their overall vision for the future. So that's really why they came to us, and our agency hasn't had the opportunity to actually work with them, really, in the past. So we're excited to get this opportunity to, to work with the Village of Valleyview. One of the things that was highlighted in their application was a really, really collaborative engagement process. It's really gonna be the core foundation of our efforts there in the village. So some of the things that they talked about in their application as well, and I'm sure that the process is inclusive and equitable throughout the entire project, really, making sure that there's a strong community vision established there. And what's really great is that the village is offering to do kind of, is community-led efforts. So essentially, in addition to some of the meetings that we already have planned and outlined within our own scope, they're gonna be conducting their own efforts as well. And we're really gonna kind of piggyback off each other's engagement efforts, going to different events. They're gonna be hosting roundtables, which we'll be in attendance for, and really make any of that as collaborative as possible. If it'll go right. So some of the critical topics that they included in their application that we will definitely be diving into more deeply. And we're gonna be meeting with the project team here, hopefully by the end of the month, to really flush out these kind of core topic areas in addition to others, that will be included in kind of our current conditions analysis of the community. So some of the things that they highlight of being a significant issues right now, population shift, so really the pop, aging population, residents are getting older, what does that look like? Multimodal transportation, connectivity to local businesses and regional destinations, recreation and parks, those kind of go together. Obviously, they have great access to the Topath Trail right there in Valleyview, and then also the National Park. And it's also great connectivity, hopefully in the future, connecting folks from Valleyview to Garfield Heights and some other communities kind of surrounding Valleyview, and getting them to those regional assets. Valleyview is such an interesting kind of dichotomy between residential and industrial type uses. So land use regarding housing and industrial expansion, what does that look like? So I think it's gonna be really interesting to take a deep dive into land use in particular. And then lastly, community infrastructure. So what we are, we're requesting approval of that professional planning services agreement with the Village of Valleyview. Total contract costs were estimated to be about $120,000. $96,000 of that will be in-kind, village contribution, not to exceed $24,000. We estimate work to be completed by the end of October of next year.
Thanks, Rachel. Any questions for Rachel? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion to approve that the Village of Valleyview's master plan. Seconded by Mayor Kurtz. Any other further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Orange Village Wayfinding and Trails Plan.
The Golds will be presenting. Paul Triolo would be the project lead, but he is out of the office today, so thank you for stepping up.
Yes, thank you. So here to request approval for resolution number 250710-E for the Calgary County Planning Commission to enter into professional planning service agreement with Orange Village for the Wayfinding and Trails Plan. So over the past few years, the Village of Orange has developed a recreational trail network to connect their neighborhood, residential area with community assets such as Pinecrest. And then throughout, through this project, they're looking to improve that connectivity with those assets by enhancing their wayfinding system. So that work that we would do would include inventorying what exists now, trails, signs, destinations. One of the best practices going forward, developing sign typologies for them, and then recommending where sign stations could go and where trail connectivity improvements could happen in the village. So along with this, it'll be very heavy on engagement, so we're looking to build off of the Orange Village community survey that was completed last year. In that survey, 70% of residents, or respondents noted that having paved trails was very important to them. And then also with this engagement, talking with adjacent communities, such as Pepper Pike, Warrensville Heights, Solon, Morland Hills, Highland Hills, Woodmere, about trail development in their communities as well. Interviewing Orange Village community committees, which they formed as a result of the community survey. So they have like a parks and recreation committee that we would be interested in speaking with. And holding open houses with the public and other community events. So once again, requesting approval for professional planning services with the village. Total cost is $75,000, 60 of that is in-kind, $15,000 contributed by the village. And work is anticipated to wrap up next, end of June.
Thank you. Thanks, Luke. Appreciate it. Any comments or questions from the group? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve this planning and service agreement with the city, with the Village of Orange. So, or second.
Second.
Second, Mayor Burke. Any other further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, seeing Bedford Master Plan.
Thank you. Patrick is stepping in for Alex Long, who will be managing this project. Thank you for stepping up.
Absolutely, I look forward to seeing these slides. My name is Patrick Hewitt, I'm a planning manager with the County Planning Commission. They were requesting approval for the resolution 250710-F, entering into a professional planning services agreement with the City of Bedford for a master plan. Bedford's current master plan was completed in 2007. It's one of the few communities for whom we have not done any work through our community planning services program recently, although the city has accomplished many of its goals outlined in the existing plan. There are others that are outdated or that need to be reworked. The new master plan will have a heavy focus on land use and redevelopment. There's a significant amount of land that the City of Bedford owns and that is available for strategic redevelopment. This plan will incorporate extensive community engagement, and that will help inform the plan's strategy and the desired outcomes as well. We are requesting approval of a professional planning services agreement with the City of Bedford. The total contract for this master plan will be $150,000. That'll be $135,000 in-kind, and we're requesting a contribution of $15,000 from the village. We estimate that this work will be completed by December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve the, the planning and services agreement, City of Bedford.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Burke. Any other further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thanks. We're gonna move into the next item, information on presentation. I think we're gonna hold off on the data.
We'll hold off on that, that's okay, Kevin. We did have a presentation on the data book that we talked about the last meeting. Maybe if you wanted, can you get to your last slide, just on the viewer? I do have two copies too in the office, if anybody wants one, but one of the pieces that the teams have been working on since we talked about last was building an online portal, oh, thank you. An online portal for the same data, so that if you didn't want to have to run through a report or look at something online, they've been working hard on that. So that will be coming to you, and we'll make sure, once it's live, we'll send you a link for that, so. Yep, so we'll have a data book viewer, so you can pick. Want to explain, Kevin, quickly?
So in addition to our print data book, do you want to just pass this around?
Yeah. You got it.
We, for new for this year, we have an interactive version of the data book there. It has all of the same maps that are in the document, but in an online, interactive, clickable way. Layer up there shows the number of commuters who take public transit to work, this is an example. If you click on any one of those, you'll also get all of the details for each of the track or community. And then you can also create a printable PDF you can export if you need to incorporate something into your own work. And we've got all of that up on our website and countified into our communities. So that'll be our print document, the interactive data book, and then a few other products for working with data in more depth. We have spreadsheet available, and we have map services for the GIS folks to take the data from the data book and pull it into their own map.
Thank you, Kevin. Sorry for the very abbreviated presentation. Any questions on? I know, it's good stuff, too. But I know.
One more or two slides, and Mary can get in on that. All these guys get in.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and, you know, part of the strategy for putting the township in the middle of the agenda was so that we didn't lose quorum to have a vote on it. And unfortunately, we're still talking, it's been eight hours, so my apologies for a long agenda and a longer meeting than usual. But I'll be very brief, and then I think maybe we take a bio break and let them come back, and that way everyone has a little stand-up stretch. But just a few updates, so we are currently starting the 2026-2027 biennial budget planning with OBM. So we've received some initial numbers, and we have a meeting later this month with OBM to talk through what, where we are currently and what our needs are for the future biennial budget. So that is underway. And then in addition to kind of, we turned over, if you remember, our conversation with the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Program Administration, that that is now with soil and water and sustainability, but we are helping with the application review that came in. All the process, all the applications were due, I think, last week? But, so we're helping them with the review, just because we've been working on it for so many years to lend our insights on that. Again, coming forward to you, hopefully in the future months, we're gonna continue to work on updates of our policies and procedures. We kind of got behind on that last year, just given all the different activity that was happening, but we want to pick that back up. And then recently, we had some of our team members volunteer at the Cleveland Food Bank. We're trying to do more things of team building and getting out in the community, and so that's just a picture of us recently going there. And it's always great to give back, and so it was a really good experience, and we hope to do more things like that. August, as of now, is a regular meeting, but we've had multiple meetings back-to-back going for, you know, since the last several months, so thank you for that. If we don't have any action items, we may not need to meet in August. And so if anything comes up, I'll let you know, but at this time, I, I don't have anything immediate, but we'll see, and I'll be in touch with you about that one.
Okay, thanks, Mary, appreciate it. I don't know if somebody can go out and see.
Do you want to get a quick break, and we'll check on them?
Maybe somebody check on them now, I don't even know if I want to break.
Okay, I, I have to take a break personally. I'll be back.
Business guy. Yeah, we'll try not to have a board meeting in August, but. Thank you for your time.
That's why I don't want to be late. Maybe we could, you know. Skip a month.
Do you tell them they got 30 seconds?
Presentations are done.
Thank you.
Do you know? I'm gonna, I'm gonna be one of those people, because I can. Do you know? Right? The former president. I think they had a place there for a while, but not where they've permanently. Because there's, there's thousands of people there, right?
Yeah, it's, it's funny, because there's some.
Oh, yeah? I think, based on the conversation that took place, I think Eric's gonna recommend language, and then if someone wants to move the motion or alter language, that's probably helpful.
I think I'll leave it towards down here. Jones ultimately makes motion.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so based on our conversation, I, I do believe that we are looking for a motion to approve the requested modifications as well as the site plan as presented, subject to all agency conditions. subject to all agency conditions, except for planning conditions lettered A, B, and C.
So moved.
I'll second, second over here from Mayor Gallo. Any other further comment or question from members? All right, seeing none, I'm, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Eric. All right, do we have any old business? No. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Mayor Jones, all those in favor say aye. Thank you, everybody.